Thank you again for attending tonight's Rock County Civics Academy program. Our ability to provide these presentations is solely dependent upon the financial support we receive from our sponsors and you, our faithful listeners. Our presenting sponsor is Havana Coffee on Milton Avenue in Janesville, Wisconsin. This program would not be possible without the ongoing support of the Italian House and Big Radio, WCLO, WJVL. Supporters include Ragnar LTD and Ragnar Software, the John Westwall family, Dan Plushick's Janesville News Report, American Awards and Promotions, Stockman Property Development, LLC, Tim Lindau, Nowland Law. If you believe in our mission, we welcome your financial support. Materials explaining our mission and financial support opportunities are available on your chair or by visiting our website, commonsenserockcounty.org. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our moderator, Rich Gruber.
Thank you, Paul, and it's a pleasure once again to have the opportunity to visit with candidates for the Milton City Council this evening. Before we begin our conversation, which will be just a little bit different than some of our past events, and I'll explain that in a moment, I'd like to introduce John Cruzan, who is the chairman of the board of the Milton, Greater Milton Chamber of Commerce. John?
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. All of you watching Facebook Live or watching later, we're certainly glad to have you here. You know, the Milton Chamber has been involved in a candidate forum for years and years. I don't know the long history, but it's been a long time, and it got to be more and more of a challenge for us in many, many respects, and we found a great partner in the Rock County Civics Academy. They've been doing this type of thing in the Janesville area, came to Milton last year, and this year, we said, "Let's collaborate. Let's work on this together," and I think we brought the best of two worlds together for the good of Milton citizens, for our city council candidates, and for our school board candidates, which just got over with. So, welcome and thanks to all.
Thank you, John. And good evening. We, again, we're blessed to have two of the three candidates for the Milton City Council present with us tonight, and we're, because it's just the two of them and myself, we're going to make it a little bit more informal, and instead of the hard, Rich asking difficult questions routine, it'll be Rich asking a little softer questions, and we'll just kind of have a conversation back and forth, if that's okay with you, John.
Let's do it.
It's gonna work? Okay. I'm gonna start with the easiest one that you could possibly think, and this is the best softball you're gonna get all night long, I guarantee it. Ken Smith, what caused you to decide to get involved and run for the Milton City Council?
Well, Ned and I moved here, went on 24 years ago now. I think people have heard me say more than once that I have lived halfway around the road and back again a few times. I have never been to a place like Milton. It's a community that makes you want to be a part of it. When I was working third shift as a police officer, I never had to worry about my family at home. I worked third shift for many, many years. When I deployed to Iraq, I never had to worry about my family because of the friends that I had made here. I knew that they would be fine. And then when I retired from law enforcement and the military and did all that, we started a business in this community, and once again, this community rallied around us and has made our business successful. You just don't get that anywhere else. So, then after retirement, you start kinda going down what I call the rabbit hole of involvement. And I serve as the president of the Police Commission for the city, I'm on the Plan Commission for the city, and to just keep giving back, this just seemed like one of the best ways to give back to a community that has really given us so much.
Thanks, Ken. Eric Stockman, what events caused you to take the leap and get motivated and dive in?
Thank you, Rich. Thank you to the Rock County Civics Academy and also the Milton Chamber for hosting this, and thank you for those of you that are coming to watch us tonight. This is my second term on the city council, and I have to admit, I served with some really great people. We have an amazing city staff that works hard for Milton, and we're doing some really cool things. I look forward to meetings. I look forward to what we do, so I've enjoyed it, and I want to keep that going. In the private sector, my wife and I rehabilitate, restore buildings in our downtown. We create spaces for new business to come in. We create housing, affordable housing for families, and I want to continue that work at a different level, at the city level. In addition, over this last term, we formed a new fire department, a new Edgerton Fire Protection District, and we're not done. To see it through to its fruition, I want to see the fire stations built and minimize that impact, if I can, to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. The council operates by the old majority rule principle, and that means that you must find a majority of the council to agree to take any action that's gonna move forward. How do you go about building consensus among the members, and specifically, how do you build that consensus to support your ideas? Eric?
To me?
Yeah.
So, I've learned firsthand, I've come to meetings with one idea in mind, based on the agenda where I thought things might go, and I'm presented with a totally different view from those council members that I served with, and I think polite discussion, listening is key, and keeping an open mind. We all run in different groups, and everybody brings different values and different constituents that they represent, so I think it's just important, just that, just to listen and be mindful of each other, and if you had an entire board that always all voted the same way, you have the wrong people. So, I think different views are important, and that's how I'd handle that.
Okay. Ken, same question. Council operates by majority rule, and that means that you have to have the majority of the council agree if you're gonna take any action moving forward. How do you go about building consensus among the members to get them to adopt your ideas?
I think most people, especially that are that involved in their communities, really want to do what's best for their communities, and if you really research what you want to put forward to them, and really have the facts for them, and communicate those facts clearly for them, oftentimes, they will, you can create some buy-in. But when you can't, like Eric alluded, you have to sometimes just be quiet. No, you're not the smartest guy in the room. Somebody might have a better idea than you. There are different ways of viewing what you're trying to accomplish and help you. Done that many times in my life through law enforcement, the military, and everything else. Just try to get a plan through and work it through, and that's the best way I can think to do it, is educate yourself, and then listen to others as you're presenting it.
Well, let's go from there, Eric, or Ken, rather. From your view, what's the most compelling issue that's facing the city council, and how do you intend to address it going forward?
Right now, there is incredible lack of affordable housing out there, or whatever that looks like. There, we're, the process, the city is, and the Plan Commission's in the process of modernizing the zoning code. We also need to look at our comprehensive plan to bring that affordable housing to Milton. Everyone knows that if you want to lift people up out of poverty and bring them to the middle class or farther, buying a home is really that first place where it starts. And right now, we're unable to secure funds from some loans that have just passed because our comprehensive plan is too old. And I know that it's a huge job to get the zoning codes modernized, but I think we also need to be looking at our comprehensive plan, which was done in 2015. And so, because of the age of that, we can't, we don't qualify for any of these loans that there's $525 million that the governor's just signed, there's four bills that were just signed in. So, I think looking at that comprehensive plan is the next step to try to address the issues of housing and bring more people to live in this community.
Eric, from your view, what's the most compelling issue that's facing the council, and how do you plan on addressing it?
So, I would agree with Ken, it's housing, but I don't want to just stick with that while throwing a new one, which is the fire stations. It's, this new Fire Protection District is gonna require new fire stations in Milton, and there's a significant investment to have three fire stations and that brick and mortar and to build them. And I know that we're already looking to state grants, state and federal grants, but right now USDA, some fundings, financing, trying to, I guess, mitigate that impact to taxpayers. I think an operating referendum is, we're gonna have it irregardless, but I think we can minimize it if we are fiscally responsible, if we work hard to exercise every other option before going that route.
Well, and following along with that, Eric, what's your plan to engage the public in building consensus around that particular critical issue?
I think it's important to have more open sessions, invite the public to come and listen, and we've been doing that. The public has been invited and always will be invited, but I think continuing that open discussion, inviting them in, communication is key, and that is an area that I want to focus on. And we have, even in just the last couple of council meetings, there's been a couple of items that have come across the docket where we've considered having, inviting the public in to a listening session to better understand the topic.
Ken, you mentioned the comprehensive plan, you mentioned the need to bring it up to date, the planning ordinances, the zoning ordinances that go hand in hand with it. All of those are key to development in the city. From your view, how do you intend to engage the public and hopefully help build consensus among the public on the right direction to go with those issues?
That red card comes up quick. It's got me nervous there.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, but this is a small town, less than 6,000 people in this community. Everybody knows everybody. It isn't just using social media to get out there and get the word out and try to get people to join, but getting out there and just talking to people. If you're out regularly in our community and you're talking to people, and you're not just sitting there with your face in your phone and getting people involved outside of the council chambers, we need to, as, we have a responsibility as older persons to communicate with the members of our community when we see them and everywhere that we see them, because they may not want to come in there, and they don't know that they'll feel comfortable. So, engage them where they are comfortable, out in the restaurants, in the streets. You see them walking. My wife and I, we walk all the time, and we're always saying hello to somebody, and engage people that way, at least let them know that you're approachable and that they can talk to you about it.
Eric, when, and if you're elected again and you take office, what's going to be the topic of the first resolution that you want to introduce to the council? And why is that particular topic important? And how are you going to build consensus, not only among the council, but the community, that is the right thing to do?
So, I want to touch on this housing and homelessness again. Maybe we didn't touch on the homelessness, but the housing. And I've gotten more passionate about it lately, affordable housing and understanding what's out there, because there's a good amount of money at the Rock County level to help fuel some of these developments. Some of the statistics are staggering, less than 2% vacancies in our county right now. And one in four families that is looking for low-income housing can find it, and the number of applications that have been submitted to Echo daily have doubled, and it's up to 30 applications a day to try to get funding. So, we have a problem, and it's not just a Milton problem, it's a Rock County problem, it's an everywhere problem. And so, I think looking for funding at the county level and working with developers, incentivizing developers, and remembering when we do incentivize some of these TID and TIF districts, we make them set aside a chunk of that for affordable housing.
Good. Thanks, Eric. Ken, what'll be the topic of the first resolution you introduce when you take office with the council? Why is the issue important to you, and how do you intend to build consensus around it?
Well, I hate to parrot Eric there, but again, for me, it's housing as well. Again, so much depends on quality housing, affordable housing, so that members will want to move to our community, will want to stay in our community, and live here and raise their children here. I don't know how else to say it, and I talked about it earlier, not only looking at my eye field from the county, but also up to the state for certain sorts of funding initiatives, and again, yeah, housing.
Okay. Well, along those same lines, let's start with you, Ken. What are your top three priorities for the city?
I don't know, I think possibly housing.
Okay.
Okay, maybe. I'd also like to see some incentives to bring in some places for people to stay when they come here. We have quite a few attractions that make us come to our community. I would love to be able to bring in, it doesn't have to be a huge hotel, but something that people feel like staying in Milton while they're here to spend their money here, that would be awesome. And also, this community, these people are wonderful here, and I want to see this community be a place where anyone who wants to live here, no matter what they look like, no matter who they love, that they can come here and live here and feel safe in here.
Thanks, thanks. Eric, what are your top three priorities?
My passion, promoting and supporting our small business in town. We've revitalized our downtowns, and our businesses are booming. It drives so much tourism, it brings people to Milton, it makes Milton a favorable place to live. More family-friendly housing. We're gonna beat housing today.
We're gonna beat it down to the ground.
And then last, keeping our fire, our EMS support services, keeping that locally controlled, and finishing what we started, giving them the brick and mortar and the equipment so that they can do their job, and we can get those call-response times under three minutes over and over, regardless of where you are in the district.
Let's shift gears just a little bit, and I want to get into the area of intergovernmental cooperation, because as we've mentioned, the housing thing, that seems to be a theme that we've got to work with others to make things happen. How do you propose to improve intergovernmental cooperation on issues like affordable housing and homelessness and similar issues that are common across the region, Ken?
Well, given how close Janesville is to us, I know that we should be reaching out to the city of Janesville to cooperate, and there are certain programs, the child homelessness is 1860, project 1864, I think it is, I'm not sure.
1647.
Oh, yeah, 1647, thank you. Working with those programs as well, and trying to address those issues, working with our school district. They know every kid in the district, they know the issues that they're having, and they know the issues their families are having that we may not have, and give us some insight as a council.
Okay. Eric, same question. How do you propose to improve intergovernmental cooperation on issues like housing and homelessness and similar issues?
I think picking up the phone and calling and working with those other local governments and city council members. Even just in preparing for tonight, I looked at a number of programs that you've hosted and that and put on, and I think that just getting the right people in the right room together, communicating, sharing ideas, I think that there's enough of a need and there's enough of an urgency in the difference in both, all the surrounding cities, that I think that all would be open to it, all working for a common good.
One of the measures of success in the community in the realm of economic development is to see planned growth occur in places where, in fact, it's expected. We've seen a lot of industrial growth in Milton over the course of the past few years. The tax increment financing district concept and the laws associated with it are complicated and complex. Are they the right tool, and how do you convince the taxpaying public that if they are the right tool, they're the right one that we should be using now? And let's start with you, Eric.
Sure, sure. No, I do believe in the TID districts, I do believe in that model. The basis, a lot of the misunderstanding is what they see it as free money for the corporate side. When, what you have to consider is that when we're trying to draw new business in, which this last year, we increased our value of our city by 107 million, and that is what keeps our tax rates stable. That is how we overcome inflation and can keep taxes at a stable rate regardless of inflation. But I like TID, I like creating them, we have to keep trying, acquiring new land so that we can attract these businesses. One of the rules of the TIPS are, it basically says, the project wouldn't happen unless you had this. So, without the TIP, it wouldn't happen. So, you can keep an open farmland for a period of time, or we could have John Green Motors or a Dairy Queen, and a lot more tax bases is drawn, and a lot more value is added to the city when you have those businesses. And I think education, I think there's a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding that I would like to clear up.
Ken, the same question. A measure of success often in the realm of economic development is seeing those new businesses sprout, and we've seen a lot of that in Milton, and you've used tax increment financing as one of the tools. Is it a complicated tool? How do you explain that tool to the public and convince them that it's the right tool for Milton's future?
Well, thanks, Eric, for, basically, what he said, and then, reaching out, again, like I've said before in the earlier answers, not just getting out of the council chamber and chatting with people, and making them know that they can come and ask questions. We need to, in my opinion, get them into the chamber as best we can by talking to them in the public, so that we can explain these things, but it all starts there, and bringing, we're talking about how do we make people understand it? If I understand the question correctly, and getting people in so that we can explain the process to them, so that there is, it takes, demystifies that entire process.
If you look around at how tax increment financing districts are managed in a lot of other cities, you'll see that there's a propensity of borrowing from one tax increment district to bail out another tax increment district, and in that process, oftentimes you lose some of the accountability for the original purpose of one district being created by another. You aren't at that stage yet in Milton, but as you grow, how do you propose as a council to set policy that makes sure that the community sees a transparent application of tax increment financing?
We already have those policies in place. It's a matter of just policing it and ensuring that everyone follows the rules, that there aren't exceptions because, you know, this person or that, and I don't think we do that in this community. This community is run very professionally, and I don't see that as an issue now, and I don't, I don't think I'll see that as an issue in the future.
Okay, okay. Eric, same question, and your thoughts?
So, no, all of our TID, our districts are all healthy. I do, I do believe Janesville has one that's in the red. In spending within the TID and the money that goes out, the only reason you're gonna have a TID that goes into the negative is in an economic downturn, or where the value of those properties in that district lose their value. And you can wait it out and wait for the bounce back. There are, there is Wisconsin State Legislature that will allow you to reset the base, and it's not a loss of dollars for the city, because it's future tax dollars that come in to make it whole. I think that, again, being transparent with the city, or with the citizens, if we ran into that, I don't know that you would need to steal necessarily, move dollars. Like I said, ours are all healthy, and once these TID districts do close and that, those tax dollars come in, we'll be in fantastic shape.
Okay. We have a common theme of trying to engage the public and get them into City Hall and have them be part of the solution as opposed to being on the sidelines and guessing and second guessing. How do you personally engage the public and encourage them to be better informed and understand the issues, and then act based on that understanding?
Sure. Part of my civic responsibility, I serve on a number of nonprofit boards, and boards where I can make a difference, where I can use my skill set to help other organizations, and in the circles that I run within those boards, I'm always talking about what we do at council, typically because we have a lot of fun at city council meetings. So, I like to talk about topics that we did cover, keep everyone informed. If I see an agenda item that's coming up that may affect a certain group, may affect a block of businesses, I will reach out and call, but I do my best to commonly speak about city council meetings, what's going on, and ask people that I haven't bumped into in a while, what can Milton do better? I say that time and time again, because I'd like to learn what we can do to better serve.
Okay. Ken, same question. How do you engage the public and make them part of the solution?
I think I'd already addressed that earlier. Get out and chat with people, get them in the door. Always be approachable, and make them want to come to you, is the way I said. Every one of this community is curious about everything that happens in this community. It's one of the god-lovin' mostiest places I've ever lived in my life, and so they will seek you out, they will ask questions, they will call you. I actually called Eric, just with something that I thought he might be interested in the other, was it this morning or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, because I saw a piece of legislation I thought it might affect him. And that, like you say, you call people, you get out and you chat with them. Get up, when you see somebody, when you go into MFR, you go over and you chat with them, see how they're doing. If they, especially if you're gonna be an older person, you should be finding out how they're doing and what they want from you.
And I will say, Paul jumped all over that. Paul Hancher, city administrator, and sent me a bunch more information, so thank you for that. Sorry, I probably spoke out of turn.
No, no, that's fine. I want to encourage, encourage the cross-conversation. That's really what it's all about. What's your philosophy concerning implementing user fees in lieu of property taxes to support particular services provided in the city?
I'm not a fan.
You're not a fan? Tell me why, and how do you, how do you balance the budget if you don't have access to something beyond property taxes?
You just went right over my head with that one, to be honest with you. I'm not a fan of them. I think that the way that, as fiscally responsible as this city is, that we run on a tight budget, and we run on a well-maintained budget, and we run typically exactly where we should be for a community our size and the tax base that we have. So, just to start implementing user fees, I don't know that we have a need for that right now.
Okay. Eric, same question. Your philosophy on the use of user fees in lieu of property taxes to support particular city services?
So, as user fees, as far as if we're thinking fire EMS, I don't know that I would be as cra, as for that, but I wanted to look at a different, and I think this, you may be asking this at the same time. Consider a 72-unit apartment complex that goes in, and that impact it has on police and fire. Consider a very large industrial building that maybe has some special needs for firefighting, should combustible, some fire take off. Think of those, as soon as they hit, they came into the city under some TID plan, and they had their incentives, that comes, we have an increased service. That is part of what we're trying to serve with these new stations in this new district. So, I want to look at maybe how you might have those developers pay or pass that on to those larger corporations. I think it's worth at least looking into it at that larger scale, maybe not the smaller, and that might have been what Ken was, not four, but at a bigger scale, I'm for looking at it.
And that opens a whole new realm of conversation when you go beyond the user fee, the user fee. An example of that is a building permit. I need a building permit, so I'm going to pay a fee. If I don't need a building permit, I don't pay that fee, but I'm getting that particular service. You raise the issue of impact fees, and impact fees, by definition, it comes down to, I'm building a large development, and I will have a certain level of demand for police, fire, and other infrastructure services, is how do I recoup those costs beyond the property tax? Is that an area we really want to open and explore, given the current constraints on our ability as a city to raise property taxes in the current environment? What do you think?
No, I not, I wouldn't support that, so because I think it's gonna also get us into a legal battle, where corporations have been recognized as individuals, and then if this individual, if you say like with the individual homeowner, doesn't have to pay it, and then I come in with my army of attorneys and say, "Well, I'm a person too, and why are you making me pay these impact or user fees?" I don't know that, and I haven't seen enough literature on this, and I get that, you know, there are some communities that are starting to do the user fees for fire services and things like that, and if you pay your taxes, you shouldn't, you should not be paying user fees for those types of services or impact fees for those. And that's part of having the controlled growth of the community as well. If you're growing so fast that you're outpacing your services, then that's a problem with the strategic plan as the city moves forward, and you should be looking at, okay, are we going too fast for what we have? And need to back up the boat a little bit.
And that kind of begs the question, is growth in Milton at the right pace from your perspective?
I feel it's a little slow, but I'd like to see it go faster.
Okay. And how do you encourage that?
Again, looking at some of the, what I alluded to earlier with getting our comprehensive plan updated, and I know that we're gonna do that, but I would like to make that a priority, so that we do have access to some of the state funding that's out there right now for the low-interest loans, so that we can encourage, and that in hand with updating our zoning code, that's gonna make it more comprehensive, we can have higher density subdivisions, things like that, so we can bring down the cost of the housing for individuals that are moving, that drive them to move to our community, but also attract those developers to come to our community and develop it and build the neighborhoods and things that I'd like to see.
Okay. Same question for you, Eric. Is growth too fast, too slow? Is it being managed properly? How do you, how do you control it? What's your vision?
Sure, and I think the growth is just right. I think that- I think that we attract business to city because we have a phenomenal infrastructure. We attract people to, to Milton because we are safe and have great schools. I think we're growing at a great rate. We need to keep growing though. As I stated earlier, that's how we're gonna keep our, our taxes stable. We have to keep growing. You look at Bodie, California, great example. Get busy get, living or get busy dying. Way to fall off the map is to, to stop growing. So I, I think encouraging it and better explaining to, to the city how, how we win when we grow the value of our city and how that works with taxes and, and adding great services and great places to go and tourism, all that that comes. All these jobs that have been created in Milton, now there's places to spend money in Milton and we want to add places to live in Milton for these workers.
Eric, building code interpretation and enforcement has always been a point of contention across the board, community by community by community. What's the climate in, in Milton and how do you improve it? If it needs improvement or what? Your thoughts?
I'd, I'd love the, the building code. The general engineering company handles that for the city of Milton, the inspections. Permitting and that ultimately comes through the city, but they issue it, they handle the inspections. I find them, I've done business developing in, in Janesville and other surrounding cities and I think that they handle it fantastic. I think it's great. They're a great team to work with, they're very fair and are, especially when you're touching these historic buildings and you can't always make them one hundred percent like a brand-new building. You're just limited by things rather than sticking to the fine letter of, of, of the code. We're making it better and, and they work with you on that. So I think Milton is a fantastic place to develop and work to, to, to build new business and structures.
Okay. Ken, the same, same question. Building code interpretation enforcement is a point of contention in every community. From your perspective, are we, are we doing it in a friendly fashion? Are, are there areas we can improve? Areas that we can make a difference for the, to encouraging economic development?
Well, I haven't had the same exposure as Eric has to our, to our building code. So I really don't have a background to answer that with any real authority. I have never had an issue with it. We've, the only experience we have is we put an addition on our house. The building inspectors came out, they did everything beautifully. Getting through the process for the city was no issue, so I really don't have an issue with it personally.
Well, I wanna take it a little different, slightly different direction to an area where you have had some experience and that's in the comprehensive plan for the community. And there's room there for bringing it up to date. Your thoughts on how we can do that and make it a better user-friendly community?
Well, again, that's redoing the, going through the whole entire comprehensive plan. And that is something that we would do as, you know, we would hire typically a, a company to come in and help us do that. We wouldn't be doing that as individuals. I would like to see a modernizing brought up. Like I said, it was last updated in twenty fifteen, so I think, just like our, our zoning code, I think there's plenty of places that we can improve that.
Okay, okay. Shared services with other units of government. There are means of providing some economy of scale, there are means of providing some efficiency. What's your perspective on shared services among local governments within the region? Is, what can we do to, to move any sort of shared service concept forward?
So with the exception of the, our fire protection district, I guess I look at that in a sense that we, we're sharing across municipalities, which is fantastic. I do know that there, in the past, we've tried to share some fire service with Janesville and I think that there was a, there was a struggle. But outside, outside, outside of what we have in, in the fire protection district, I guess I would be open to examples in, in, in working to try to, to try to find a, a common ground where we could both win in that. I do see difficulties based on where we struggled with the fire department and some of those fire services.
Okay. Shared services with other municipalities, other, other units of local government, are we doing enough?
I don't know that we can do anymore. The fire services and EMS services are typically about the main places that most communities do shared services. And they have, you know, agreements to help each other with things such as law enforcement, things of that nature. But I'm not really sure where I could see, I would like, if somebody has some ideas, I'd love to see it and like to have the conversations, but I can't imagine anywhere else where we would be able to do that and, and share those costs effectively.
Let's do this, let's take a break for a couple of minutes. Let everybody stretch their legs when we come back. I'd like to ask the audience, if you have any particular questions you'd like to ask if the panelists would incorporate them into the, into the last half of the program. Okay, welcome back. And this section of our conversation with, with our candidates tonight is gonna shift gears and go to questions that are coming out of our audience. And for both of you, I wanna take just a second and, and apologize upfront because I, we're kind of viewed as the media. And yet I don't feel like I'm in the media. I'm more just that concerned citizen trying to get to the heart of the issues and make you feel comfortable and, and bearing your soul and, and why you're doing this. But at the same time, you have to maintain a relationship with the media if you're going to be successful as a member of the council. What's your perspective on the role of the media? And how do you cultivate the media to work with you as opposed to work against you? Would you like to start, Ken?
Sure, love to. Bit of experience in this, I, as a former police officer, you know, you're, you're talking to the media quite a bit. You learn very quickly that the last person on this earth or, or entity that you wanna make an enemy out of is the press. Because they are one of our basic American rights. So when you view it like that, you don't have to, you don't have an adversary relationship. And then going through the process of hiring a police chief and all that and talking to the media, I, it's very comfortable and there's no reason to not be comfortable speaking with the media because if what you're saying is true, is honest, and you're doing it with integrity, you have nothing to fear what somebody prints, absolutely nothing.
Thank you. Eric, and your thoughts on media relations and?
I, I enjoy speaking with the media. I always take the calls from Kelsey or whoever may have questions after meeting. I think working with the media to help get the word out and to help that communication piece that we talked so much about is really, really important. I'd also like to encourage the media not only to print clickbait that encourages people to engage on an article as much as well-thought-out ideas, principles, ideas that are gonna be passed to, to inform. And I think we have a great working relationship with the newspapers and I'm happy with what I've seen as of late.
Okay. Another question from the audience. What have you personally done to educate yourself on local government functioning, its roles and its responsibilities, Eric?
So I'd take every opportunity I can to attend webinars on topics that I may foresee the city of Milton being engaged in or things that are gonna become important. The mayor is always real good about sending out information that she may run, run across that will behoove us with everything that we're facing for challenges. Also, there's a local government 101 that a number of us are going to be taking and that is a priority for me and important to, to better educate myself.
Ken, same question. What have you personally done to educate yourself on local government functions, roles and responsibilities?
When I got on the plan commission, I, first thing I did was call city hall and said, what do I need to read? Read, read, read. I started reading the zoning ordinances and, and all of those things that affect the plan commission. When I made the decision to jump down this rabbit hole, I got the handbook for Wisconsin elected officials. And I've been, that is the driest read in the world. Ah, God. But I'm reading it. My wife's laughing at me.
You haven't read my dissertation, so.
And so I, educate yourself, we're, we're adults. Educate yourself. If you're gonna take on the responsibility of a position, then take some time and figure out the best sort of our community, which, how, how to best do that. What the rules are, play by them, know the rulebook.
And I'm gonna kind of incorporate your closing remarks with another question that came from the audience. Is there any question you've been asked that you'd like to elaborate on further? One, and then, well, let's start with that one because I'm seeing a, a, a bit of, I think I've sprung an opportunity on you.
Well, I don't think that we fully understood the, the question about working, oh gosh.
Shared services.
Shared services, thank you.
Shared services, I second that.
I had that moment, hon. Yes, I, you know, you, we do understand the thing that with the community, there are, I didn't think, personally I didn't think about like the school district and the city being separate. Yes, we do share services with our police officers and where, where we can best serve each other when we get together. We do look at our school district as stakeholders. Yes, there are different areas within the, the city that do shared services. So yeah, thanks. But no, I, I just appreciate the opportunity to get in here, speak with you people tonight and let you know who I am. And I feel that I'm asking you to give me one of the greatest things that you own, that you have as an American citizen, that's your vote. And so you have a right to know who I am. And if you ever have any questions, you can call me. My information's right online everywhere, it's all over the place. And I'll chat with you one-on-one, you can figure it out, okay? But I hope, hope you vote for me on April the second. Thank you much.
Thanks, Ken, thanks very much. Is there any question you've been asked that you'd like to elaborate on further? And then your closing comments.
I've gotta jump on the shared services comment. After a better understanding, a little more broad and inclusive than I had first spoke, so I do apologize. But anywhere where these services are mutually beneficial to, 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 to both parties and where we can work together, like training for our, for our police department and different activities in the school district, I am all for that, Rich. So and thank you all for coming, thank you for this opportunity. I've had a great time tonight. Some, this is one of the more challenging parts of running is, is prepping in, in this for me. And with each, each time now, the second time, I have more fun with it and I appreciate it. It makes me better, it makes me stronger, so I appreciate that. This is an exciting time for Milton. I think it's a great time to live in Milton, there's a lot of great things happening. So I'm excited to keep serving the city. I'm gonna keep working for small business, I'm gonna keep working on this housing piece to, to develop that. I will be fiscally responsible as we continue to work with the fire department and adding the new fire stations to Milton. So thank you for your time tonight and I look forward to having, earning your vote in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken Smith. Thank you, Eric Stockman. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and attention tonight. You have the next opportunity, folks, to express where you are on the issues. The election's April second, Tuesday, April second. Early voting begins next Tuesday, I believe, next Monday or Tuesday. See your city clerk if you want to take advantage of that opportunity. But there's nothing more important than you exercising that special right you have to vote on who you want as your leadership in your community. So thank you again for participating tonight and best of luck going forward to both of you. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a great rest of the evening.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.